Good afternoon. We're here tonight at the public hearing pursuant to Section 859-A of the general municipal law. This agency is the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency. The project beneficiary is 151 North Chestnut Holding LLC. The project location is 147 to 149 North Chestnut Street and 151 North Chestnut Street. The hearing date is September 5th, which is right today, 2025. The time is exactly 4:40 PM. And we're at the location of the New Paltz Village Hall located at 25 Plattekill Avenue in the village and town of New Paltz, New York. Good evening. My name is Michael Hamm and I'm the chairperson of Ulster County Industrial Development Agency. I'm also the hearing officer tonight for this public hearing being held in connection with the project, which is the subject of this public hearing. At this time, can I ask you all to please stand forward? A pledge of allegiance behind me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The mission statement of the agency, okay, it's, I'm sorry. The mission statement of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency is to advance the job opportunities, general prosperity and long-term economic vitality of Ulster County residents by targeting tax incentives, bonds, and other assistance to foster creation and the attraction of new business and the retention and expansion of existing businesses. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of our staff. Tonight, we have, sorry, it's coming, it's ripping me up a lot. I'm so sorry. Stephen Kelly, board member. We also have Trevor Carwin, board member, our executive director, Hillary Nichols, Natalie Lamelli, who is our administrative assistant, and our counsel is Shannon Wagner from Hotchkiss Russell. So today, we're holding this public hearing to allow citizens to make a statement relating to the involvement of the agency with the project for the benefit of 151 North Chestnut Holding LLC, a New York limited liability company. I would like to note that as required by New York state law, the agency is live streaming this public hearing. Chairman Mike from Hotchkiss Russell, LLC, counsel of the agency, will provide information on the agency's legal authority to hold this public hearing, a description of the proposed project, the purpose of this public hearing, and the agency's next steps. Once Shannon is finished, I'll then open up this public hearing for comments. Counsel?
The provisions of Chapter 1030 of laws of 1969 New York constitute a Title I of Article 18-A of the General Municipal Law, Chapter 24 of the Consolidated Laws of New York as amended, and Chapter 787 of the 1976 laws of the State of New York as amended, codified as Section 923 of said General Municipal Law, authorize the agency to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining, and equipping and furnishing of manufacturing, warehousing, research, commercial, and industrial facilities, among others. The proposed project consists of the following. The acquisition of an interest in two parts of land, approximately 4.736 acres, and located at 147 to 149 North Chestnut Street and 151 North Chestnut Street in the town and village of New Paltz, Ulster County, New York. The construction thereon of a mixed-use facility to contain approximately 131,500 square feet of space and to include but not be limited to market-rate apartment units, affordable housing units, and approximately 8,700 square feet of commercial space. And the acquisition and installation therein and thereon of certain machinery, equipment, and other personal property, all of this being collectively referred to as the project facility. All of the foregoing to be owned and operated by the company or an affiliate thereof as a mixed-use facility and other directly and indirectly related activities. The granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of Section 85414 of the General Municipal Law with respect to the foregoing, including potential exemptions from certain sales and use taxes, real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and mortgage recording taxes, and the lease with an obligation to purchase or sale of the project facility to the company or such other person as may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. Pursuant to Section 859-A2 of the General Municipal Law, prior to the agency providing any financial assistance as defined in the General Municipal Law of more than $100,000 to any project, the agency, among other things, must hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 859-A of the General Municipal Law with respect to said project. Since the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to this project may exceed $100,000, then prior to providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000 to this project, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility and the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to this project. After consideration of the application submitted by the agency to the company, submitted to the agency by the company, the members of the agency adopted a resolution on August 20th, 2025, authorizing the executive director of the agency to conduct this public hearing with respect to the proposed project pursuant to Section 859-A2 of the General Municipal Law. The executive director of the agency caused notice of this public hearing to be mailed on August 22nd, 2025 to the chief executive officers of Ulster County, the town and village of New Paltz, and the New Paltz Central School District, collectively the affected tax jurisdictions, and published on August 22nd, 2025 in the Daily Freeman, a newspaper of general circulation available to the residents of the town and village of New Paltz, Ulster County, New York. In addition, the executive director of the agency caused notice of this public hearing to be posted on August 21st, 2025 on the agency's website, and on August 22nd, 2025 on a public bulletin board located at New Paltz Village Hall located at 25 Plattekill Avenue in the village and town of New Paltz, Ulster County, New York. Copies of the notice of this public hearing and the other public hearing materials are available at the front of the room on the table. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit input with respect to the proposed project. We are not here to answer questions, although in the course of the hearing, we will consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. Now, unless there is any objection, I'm going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of this public hearing and instead request that the full text of the notice of this public hearing be inserted into the record of the public hearing. The agency is scheduled to consider the proposed project at a subsequent meeting of the agency currently scheduled for September 17th, 2025 at 9:00 AM. And at such meeting, the agency will also consider the comments received at this public hearing. Such meeting, like all meetings of the agency, is open to the general public. The notice of this public hearing indicated that written comments could be addressed to Hillary Nichols, the executive director. At this time, the agency has received one written comment. I will now return the floor to Mike for purposes of recognizing any citizens in attendance wishing to make a public comment.
Thank you, Shen. So if there is a representative of any affected taxing jurisdiction that is present at the public hearing right now and would like to speak, can they come forward? Please state your name, please.
Amanda Gatto, Town of New Paltz city supervisor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can go right to the podium, that's fine. Thank you.
So the Town of New Paltz has looked very carefully at the application and also the various documents that came before the village planning board to try to understand more about this project. We see the benefits of 128 new apartments, twenty of which will be some type of affordable apartment. We see the benefit of up to five new jobs, a property manager, a salesperson, and three, up to three service personnel, with I think there was about 320, excuse me. Some of them give Amanda.
We actually do not have a microphone. I apologize.
Okay. Do you try it over? Okay, great. So we also see the increase in the combined partial assessed value of approximately $13 million once this project is built, and a potential annual commercial sales tax from the five or six businesses that have been identified that would be there of about $1.5 million. What we see is the costs are lost, property tax revenue of approximately $620,176 per year, which is combined for the county, town, village, and New Paltz School District. We also see lost county sales tax revenue on that $1.5 million of sales tax, the county typically gets 50% tax. We also see on the form that was submitted by the applicants that they estimate their income to be $4,588,000, but then they take into account possible vacancies in the apartments and in the retail, bringing it down to $3,838,836. They list their expenses as being $1,263,112. That leaves them with an NOI of $2,575,724. That seems like a nice return on investment. What we also saw when we looked through some of the documents about the project plan is that the project site plan application was brought to the village planning board in March of 2024 by the developer, Westview Dev LLC, with the principal being Charles Wardman, for a mixed-use commercial residential project at 147, 149, and 151 North Chestnut Street. That application had no mention of a pilot. The project was reviewed many times over many months by the village planning board, and again, there was nothing in the documents stating the pilot being required. The site plan was approved by the village planning board on July 25th, 2025. On July 3rd, another entity, 151 North Chestnut Holding LLC, was formed. And on August 7th, that entity, 151 North Chestnut Holding LLC, was the successor at the town hall to obtain an estimate of the assessed value and estimated taxes that the Westview Dev LLC project would generate. It didn't mention a pilot, the estimated value, $13,340,000, the estimated combined annual taxes, and the current combined annual tax rate, $620,176. That would be, that's combined for county, town, village, and school. And 151 North Chestnut Holding LLC submitted a pilot application to the Ulster County IDA on August 20th for this project. That application states that the project land sales price will be $3,600,000. Right now, the county records show that 147, 149 was purchased in 2020 by C. Wardman for $100,000 and transferred to Westview Development LLC in 2025 at no cost. The records show that 151 had been owned since about 2017 by Barbara Wardman, recently deceased, had her illnesses, who was the mother of C. Wardman, with original purchase price of $263,970. To date, right now, on Ulster County map, there is no record of sale or transfer of 151 to C. Wardman, Westview Dev, or 151 North Chestnut Holding. So right now, those properties are not owned by the entity that's doing the development or seeking to be piloted. The Town of New Paltz board members, myself, I'm also speaking on behalf of Deputy Supervisor Katie Brown, and Councilmember Essie Lewis oppose the granting of the pilot and tax exemptions. For the mixed-use project, the cost-benefit of the ratio is not sufficient to warrant a pilot for these reasons. And I would like to point out that the two developments that are currently adjacent to this property and are under construction did not see the grant of the pilot. Thank you.
So at this time, can I please ask that if there's any remarks by the company, a representative of the company can now speak? Oh, I gotta go through everybody yet. You guys are gonna go last. I apologize.
Wait, wait, no, it's just the second taxing jurisdiction.
Are you with the taxing jurisdiction? I apologize. Are you with the affected taxing jurisdiction?
No.
Okay, we're not doing that here. We're not letting those comments go at this time. We'll give you, we'll get to it. We'll get to it all.
That should help cool it off. I don't. My name is Sonne Wisper. I'm a trustee of the village of New Paltz. I'm happy that we're getting more housing. Clearly, we're in a housing emergency both locally and nationally. I also am pleased that this project is subject to the village's 15% affordable housing law. But pilots are problematic. Undeniably, they shift added expenses inequitably that have to get absorbed to us as local taxpayers. In addition to pilots being unfair for existing taxpayers in the near term, there's a structural problem because of how New York state law and the property tax cap formula work. The harm is perpetuated, sorry, perpetual, because the tax cap formula's tax-based growth factor never adjusts, even at the end of a pilot's term when properties become taxable. Legislators in Albany have proposed legislation many times to fix this, but it remains unfixed. If we're stuck with this blunt instrument that even our county executive has recommended we use to address the housing crisis, let's work towards a solution that makes as much sense as possible for our community and taxpayers. We must take a harder look and try to figure this out. First, we insist on a defensible market rate of assessed value. Next, perhaps a short-term pilot can be negotiated, or a shorter-term pilot can be negotiated. And I believe we need a community host agreement. The developer needs to offset the pilot by doing something for our community. For instance, help pay for our state garden, or an infrastructure project, or an equipment purchase to offset the impact to our taxpayers. So I ask how you anticipate the local taxing jurisdictions, the village as well as the town and the school district, being involved in the process? I look forward to collaborating with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the taxing jurisdictions that would like to speak? Taxing jurisdictions?
Well, the property or the town.
No, taxing jurisdictions.
Government agency, taxing jurisdictions.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, county officials, that's all. If you put your name down, we'll get to you also. Okay? Yeah.
If the board is out of edits here, that's an affected taxing jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I'm here, but I have to comment.
All right. We'll get back on track here. Okay. So now, now I'm gonna move over to remarks by the company. Okay? So Joe, Nate, anybody have any remarks?
Sure.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. There should be a couple quick high-level data points to the project that we discussed today. 4.78 is the site, 148 apartment minutes, 20 income constraints, maybe 700 square feet of commercial space that will conceptually be divided into six individual test spaces. Construction should commence Q1 2026, maybe Q2, take 12 to 14 months.
What's Q2, maybe?
Quarter, sorry. You mean, any?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good question. The, two comments on what I heard presented by the woman from the supervisor's office. She mentioned.
She is the supervisor, though. She's not a woman from the supervisor. She's the supervisor.
Come on, come on. Let's let him speak. Let's go let him speak.
You say it correct. My apologies to you. You mentioned $2.45 million NOI and said that to help you return that investment. You neglected to add in debt service, how to fall below that money, borrowing $29 million to create a hell of a mortgage hedge against that number. So that was an inaccurate statement to make, and I have to correct you. And number two, in terms of host community benefit agreement, also addressed by one of the speakers, we are in conversations, the town is looking for a water line easement through our property to connect North Chestnut Street to New Paltz Street, and we're in discussions with that, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be welcome to the community. So those are two comments.
My name is Nate Danny. I'm Joe's partner. I'm one of the sponsors of the project. And I also want to address that, however, we can always talk about what is the net loss of tax revenue to the municipality by having the pilot as compared to having the project without a pilot. The consideration of the project with the pilot creates a tremendous amount of increased tax revenue as compared to the project not happening at all. So using a 2% discount rate on that present value, that comes out to the value of about $3.7 million today, based on the total tax revenue over that 15-year period. So I like to look at this from the perspective of what is the tax base at the end of the pilot and the project as compared to if we didn't do it. You know, it does grow that pace a lot. That's the only comment I really have.
I look forward to hearing your comments. Okay, thank you very much. I will now open this public hearing for public comment. It is 5:01 PM. By the way of operating rules, if you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I will call on you. Please wait to be recognized. Once you're recognized, please stand and state your name and address for the record. I do have the sheet here, so I'll go down the sheet, okay?
You can let him know if he needs to get his.
Okay, let's, let me finish my statement and then we can roll right into it. Let's just follow the program here, okay? We'll all get through it that quick. Okay, so please keep the comments to three minutes, okay? So that everyone that's here today, we can hear everybody's comments and you have a chance to comment for the record. If your comments mirror any of those of someone that's going to speak, it's gonna overlap, it's gonna repeat itself, please, you know, use the time wisely, okay? Anyway, if it mirrors anyone that's someone who's already spoke, you may so indicate and relinquish the podium to another speaker so that all your views are represented at the hearing and they all may be heard. When everyone has the opportunity to speak, I will conclude the public hearing. Record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency and in connection with the agency's consideration of the proposed project. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment. We are not here to answer any questions, however, we will in the course of this public hearing consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. I will now ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to comment on either the nature of the location of the project facility or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. For the record, once again, please state your name, indicate your comments on either proposed project or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Okay. At this time, sir, would you come on up and just give us your name so I can find you on the list here?
Hey, David Cacamo, C-A-C-A-M-O. And I am commenting on the break we want to give of the taxes. Okay. First of all, I want to state that there's $21,873,900 in tax exemptions already in this town and village. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I'll get to it in a minute. It's on here somewhere. They entered into this economic adventure and want tax relief to be subsidized by the general taxpayer public, which is me. I'm a senior citizen. I don't get any raise. I don't get any exemption. Retired wees on fixed income don't need a greater tax burden to help their economic I don't understand why this meeting was sold at 4:30. I mean, this is pretty full, but it's 7:00. It's 7:00. It would have been more full because some people are working. Who check conditions offered by the developer are fulfilled and carried out for the expected time of tax relief? Now, those comments were from Len Loza. He couldn't be here at 4:30 because he had to go down to city because his wife has been in the hospital, and he got a bus at 4:30. So I just gave you his comments. My comments are, anybody that's making a profit, I don't understand why they should get a tax break. And there are a number of entities in this, I've been here for 54 years, by the way, and things have gotten nothing but worse. There are entities in this community that can get a tax break and make a lot of money, such as Akamesh's Hospital, or whatever you want to call it, not a hospital, but the building up across the shop, right? Also, if you, if you want to give them a tax break, why don't you give senior citizens a tax break? And I think there's enough affordable housing. Half of this community, half of the village is owned by individual people renting out to students. And we've got two big buildings going up. I don't know if this has anything to do with these people or not, but they're gonna have apartments up above it. Zero place has apartments up above it. So there's three places that are having apartments. And I don't know what they're gonna charge for them, and I don't know what the definition of affordable housing is. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I don't take anybody else's.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comment.
And I'm a veteran, so I would like to see you.
Thank you for your service.
Need a tax break.
So moving ahead, can we all hold the applause? Okay? Just hold the applause, okay? Let's get everybody up here. Let's get everybody's comments in so we can get everybody in here to speak, okay? Next one up is Max Kimlin.
I just want to clarify with everybody, the two buildings that are currently under construction are not actually for the pilot yet, so.
You're good, Max.
That's it. Thank you very much.
That's it, Max? Thank you.
No, no.
Okay. So moving ahead, okay? Nate, you don't want to speak? I see you signed up. You're good, right? David Ruger?
Hi, I'm David Ruger. I own a smoothies bar and shop. I, in fact, have a lot to do. This is kind of adult in sorts, right?
Dave, can you tell, I know, I understand you in the business. Could you just tell us where you live? That's all, for your address?
I live in 14 Mollers.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, I own part of the corridor. I have 115, 117. I can't imagine asking if I were ever to go to develop, asking somebody to pay my bill and put it on the burden on the taxpayers. That's number one. Number two, I grew up, that was my neighborhood growing up. I spent my whole childhood in 151, the house, my best friend growing up. I grew up on Sunset Ridge, what was once a swamp, I watched totally being filled in throughout, throughout the years. So that's one thing. If you're asking for a tax credit, Meadowbrook has served the community really well in New Paltz. If you told me that you were doing the complex as an affordable, we have no place for, our kids can't afford to live in our community. And if you told me that we were gonna have another Meadowbrook, that's been a real model of, it has just gradually, they've kept it nice, and it's just served a lot of families well. I have friends that have lived there, and I'm not here to give you that. You know, if it's about money, I don't think it should go on the taxpayers' back. I've paid plenty of tax. I've had plenty of real estate in this town, but I would never ask this community to hop on. but I would never ask this community to, to hop on their back. I just, I think it's disgusting personally. There's just not, not enough for the lower side.
We have bad taxes.
And so, you know, like I said, I've been involved with plenty of real estate in my life and I just wouldn't ask anybody to hop on their back.
Thank you, Dave. Next speaker, Josh Pitt. So, Mr. Pitt, before you begin.
Sure.
Can I please caution you to not use vulgarity? Not yell, not scream. We had an incident. And when people call people on the phone, they think they're anonymous. They're actually not.
Oh, I would have, I would have blocked my phone number if I wanted to be anonymous.
So with that being said, let's keep the comments professional, okay?
I already heard what I have to say, so I'm going to say it to you again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Deegan, is Charles's representative here? I'm going to keep this real. Yeah, this is directed at you.
Please keep your comments to either the location or the tax.
I'm going to keep it real high level so you can understand. So looking at the documents here, looking at the ask, $7 million in tax exemptions, 15-year tax abatement, $5.4 million. 1.6 million sales tax exemptions for buildings and services, $22,500 in mortgage tax exemptions. That sounds pretty good. The application states, and I want everyone to realize this and recognize this, it states the project wouldn't be financially feasible without the assistance due to severe inflation and interest rates to the IDA board members and to you, Joseph, and you can share this with Charles.
Once again, please keep your comment directly forward.
Let me finish, sir, this is my time. You say this project isn't feasible. Well, that's funny. You can absorb a $5.4 million tax deficit. You know who else can't? Everyone in this room, this entire town, Ulster County can't afford that. Our median tax bill is already hundreds of dollars higher than the national average. We fund our schools, we fund our fire department, we already pay a premium to live in New Paltz. He wants to pay your premium too? No. I have a little swear word. Everyone can figure out what I'm going to say to you, but I'm not going to say it out loud. This project isn't a gift to the community. You're not making some kind of philanthropical endeavor in a town that experiencing, that is experiencing a housing crisis. You're building it because you expect to make a profit. I don't have a problem with that. Profit is okay. But why should we be covering your tax obligations so you can make money off of it? You're asking us to forego your tax revenue, your tax obligations, so you can have your money sooner. If, everyone in here, if your mother called you and said, "A developer told me, he'll build a house on my property if I cover all of his property taxes, he'll rent it out and make a ton of money. It'll be good for my property values." It'll create five jobs. That sounds like a scam. With 108 residential units that are for profit, I'm not talking about the 20 that are going to be going to people who can't afford housing to begin with. They'll need our police, our fire services, our roads, our schools. These new residents won't be paying property taxes because we gave you a break, because I'm paying them, because everyone in this room is paying them. If you can't figure out how to make money on this project without requiring the community to subsidize you, socialism for you, but not for us, no. Let's talk about job creation. How many, how much money are we talking about? $7 million? Five jobs, five full-time jobs. Yeah, I know, there's going to be about 60 construction workers and they should have careers, they should have jobs, absolutely. Five jobs, $7 million, 1.2, 1.3 million a job. That's great. Where do I sign up? You're asking for a massive break for a project according to your own application won't even provide goods and services that aren't already available in New Paltz. You know what else has value?
Mr. Pitt, your time is up.
I'm almost done.
Nope, your time is up, sir.
I'm going to finish. You interrupted me twice.
Your time is up, sir.
No, you interrupted me twice.
Thank you very much for your comment. If you could, just put that right in your supply tax.
We don't get a break on our taxes, our mortgages, we pay extra at the grocery store. Do I get any breaks on that? Does anyone in this room get any breaks on that? No. The only person who should be paying your taxes is you, sir.
I question everyone moving ahead with this public hearing to please act professional. Please. The next speaker, Elman? I'll, I'll get, you're probably the last guy, yeah, so I apologize.
I'm not on the list, but I would like to speak. Do I need to sign up or?
I'm not on the front yet.
Where is that?
Right here.
Okay, well, that's a little tough to follow, but I hardly wish I could have said. You started out this meeting, sir, Mr. Looking Phone Guy. Hey!
Put your phone down. That's disrespectful.
Hi, hi. You're here, right?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
You started out this meeting and you missed the mandate of this agency, right?
Excuse me, like?
You ran the mandate, what you're supposed to be doing here with this agency, is that correct?
That's gross.
How does this project fit any of those criteria? It doesn't. Spoiler alert, okay? We shouldn't even be having this meeting. This is absurd. It's going to add nothing. It's going to add traffic, it's going to add single-person apartments that will eventually go condo. How many years before you go condo? Okay, it's going to go condo, just like Zero Place is going condo, just like Trail Link is going to go condo. This will add nothing. This will contribute no students, schools. This will contribute nothing to the tax base. It's going to be a giant kundaloo and we shouldn't even be discussing it with these people. It's unbelievable.
All right. Next speaker, Daniel Shear.
I'm Daniel Shear. I live 300 Elstree in Hillsden. I own several rental properties here in New Paltz. I have two tracks of objections to offering any incentive to this project. The first is, I'm very concerned about the sneakiness of the application process. They went through a year and a half of development without mentioning that they would be seeking a pilot. It does not bode well for the trust that we would need for any length of time pilot. The second is that they will be doing rental property. I have rental property. This is an unfair advantage. And I'll tell you, I'll be here next month applying for my pilot and I bet every landlord in town should do the same. It's just, this is a profit-making entity. They should not be getting a pilot. My second track here, I believe this application is defective. The applying, what should we call it, incumbent, you're the agency, sorry, does not own the property that they're putting, putting forth as part of their application as noted by the town supervisor. And the second part, I really want to stress this part here. The application says, and it's on page seven of the handout, "Would this project be undertaken but for the agency's financial assistance?" They check no. Everyone in this room knows that's a lie. Housing is in demand, so they're going to pay for this project, and I will back that up. I could develop this project, either individually or probably with other landlords that are in this room right now, exactly the way it is without asking for a single pilot.
The next speaker, Rusty Staub.
My name is Rusty Staub. I've been, I live at 48 North Olga Terrace in New Paltz. I've been a member of this business community for over 40 years, I had computer operation here for about 20. And I developed in 1989, an office building which sits on Main Street that's been very successful. And by the way, I did turn down an IDA loan, or pilot, whatever, back in the day, and figured I would contribute to the community. Back then, I know one of the reasons why you're saying you need this assistance is mortgage rates. Well, 6.7%, is that what you're at? Well, I did my project in 89 and I had no parents with money. I didn't have much money then either. Mortgage rates was 10.62%, okay? And in 1990, there was a downturn in the economy and I was fortunate enough to get that property built. And banks started shutting down offering mortgages to anyone. So when I look at these numbers, when I look at a $37 million project, $8 million in equity, and I actually ran some numbers, I'm not going to bore anyone with the numbers, I did some projections on my own just on square footage costs. You have a very handsome profit here without putting this on the backs of New Paltz taxpayers. I guarantee you, the majority of New Paltz taxpayers have no idea what an IDA contribution is. No idea. They just keep complaining when taxes go up, they think maybe the town raised their budget, you know, village raised their budget. They have no idea that people like you have their hands in our back pockets and most people don't even realize that. I've been interacting with some people on the website and I got into a couple of very conversational things with some people and one person said, "Well, they don't, they don't own apartments." Well, that's not the issue. I actually explained to him, I said, "If I was a developer, if I came to your house and said, 'I'm going to build 100 apartments and I'm going to invoice you directly $1,500 a year,' would you take that deal?" He goes, "Is that what you're doing?" I go, "Well, essentially, except you don't know it because your taxes are going up, because every dollar that's not put in the bucket by businesses, community members have to pay." And everybody in this community, I don't care if you're offering 10 free or 10 affordable apartments, every apartment you offer that you get a tax exemption, another 100 people wind up getting on the list for affordable housing. So I think you're making a good profit, be happy New Paltz is allowing you to build it, and that should be it. Period.
Thank you. Next speaker, is it Jay Chanberg? I'm sorry. Did I get that right?
Uh, I don't know what you said.
Is it Julie?
No, my name's Jane.
Jane, okay, I could, I could read it. I'm sorry. Jane, Jane, thank you. Okay.
Out of the 58 South Manhattan Boulevard, I'm a renter. I don't own any property in New Paltz. I did own a home that was sold. I'm here today to say I think that it would be really difficult and not responsible to grant this pilot and let me say why. You can see this is a room with angry people because we are very rent burdened here in New Paltz and tax burdened here in New Paltz. I'm a renter. I'm not paying direct property tax, but I am paying it through my rent. In the last four years, my rent has gone up $600 a month because of the taxes. It's, it's, it's really been something that you cannot control and it will go up $100 a year, every year, probably for the rest of my life if I were staying in the apartment where I'm living now. This is, we have a couple hundred apartments being built already on this developer's row on Route 32. This would be another one. I think that Mr. Wordman, who has been active since 2012 when he first started investing in this property, has been around a long time and I think it's also disingenuous to say they wouldn't build the project if they couldn't get the tax break because he's been at this for years. And the other thing, I hope you will do your due diligence, Amanda Gatto, our supervisor, alluded to this, but if you look at the property records, if you go to the Real Property Report, which is a real estate database, you will see that Mr. Wordman paid 200, I think it was, let me just get it right, absolutely right. Here, just one second. Sorry, I made my notes. Yes, he paid, he sold it to his mother for $264,000, the property he owned. And then he bought it back from her for $3.6 million, which is the cost of, yes, and she died last month and condolences. But the cost of the property in your documents is $3,600,000 and I think there were some costs associated with the site plan, so that was added to it because there's a discrepancy of about $300,000. So you might want to do a little bit more diligence and go over the, go over the documents because some of the figures are, you know, they change. So that's what I really have to say. Please don't do this. Please don't do this to us. I know you guys really have an ability to come into a community. You're not regulated by the community, you're regulated by the legislature. I wish our town legislator was here and would have told us about this, or at least the village legislator, because we also have a village legislator who is not here and told us about this. But please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next. Joseph, Joseph, I can't read your last name. Oh, it's you, Joe, it's Joe Deegan. I'm sorry. I think it's you. Let's see. No, no, no. Stana Weisberg? Sonia?
I said Stana and I spoke.
You spoke, yeah. No, you're on here to, you're on here again to speak. That's why I was calling your name. You're on the list.
I wasn't aware beforehand that I was just speaking at the beginning.
Okay, yeah, okay. You have any additional comments? Nothing? Good? Okay, thank you. Lynn Bowder, Bowdery?
Most of what I was going to say has already been said. I was fascinated though, just reading the application to find out about the strange, huge increase in the value of that property. It was quite remarkable how it seemed to jump from $300,000 to $3,000,000, you know, $3,000,000. Is that normal business practice? Again, I've lived in New Paltz for 39 years and I have two grandchildren in the school district. And the school districts are particularly hard-hit because of tax abatements because they are severely limited by the tax caps and what they can do. And as another person mentioned, the assessed value of a pilot and property doesn't rise the same way a regular property does. If this project has not happened, it's not like the town will never see an improvement in their tax situation. I'm sure some other developer will find a way to develop it and make good money and pay good taxes. That will be a help to the town. One other little thing I noticed though was that there were no particular green building credits on the point system for the application, which meant that we were getting another typical, "I'm going to do the minimum I need to do to satisfy the building code and make my money leaving a building that will be obsolete." and make my money, leaving a building that will be obsolete much sooner than it should be, will never meet any kind of climate help unless it's extensively refitted." No mention of heat pumps, solar, anything like that. And it's just a shame to keep building things that aren't what's really needed. I know perhaps they're not required to, and we should rethink what's required at various levels, including state levels. It seems like national levels are hopeless right now. But, you know, it was disappointing to see this application. And, you know, for your other information, we're retired, and we're finding it hard to pay our taxes too, although we do love living here.
Thank you. Amanda, although you're on our sheet, did you want to say anything else?
I want to say something about considering the environmental component of this. I appreciate that you're going to have some solar panels and hopefully electric vehicle charging stations. I am concerned that this property was filled, wetlands were filled in. It's not a good base to build a large building on. It's also in a flood area. We chose not to move our town hall to Gateway Industries building because of that flooding possibility. So if you're going to take on this project, you're going to be at risk too.
Thank you. Our next speaker would be Susan Stesson.
It's hard when I go after so many people because everybody just said things
Yeah, correct.
so well and better than I can. But I was in this room several months ago trying to not have this project happen. I am your town historian. I like to look at the beauty in our town. And I know as I'm driving down, you know, 32 now, it's dark. It's dark, the sun can't shine, you don't see the mountains anymore. We didn't do a study after these two other monster buildings are being put up, and we're watching slowly these buildings that are like right on top of the road. I don't understand why they're right on the road. But when I heard we were doing a fourth monster building here, I was horrified. But we were outvoted, you know, the people that spoke about it. So the other issues, again, I sadly had to vote down the school budget this past year because I didn't want my taxes to go up, even though a lot of the things that the school needed, I felt I just couldn't have my taxes keep going up. And here, this isn't going to help our kids in the schools. It's going to hurt our kids more in those schools. These apartments are not for families with children. I think also, just to say again, we look at Zero Place, here's the role model. All of their stores are not rented. And they took how long to get the building? I guess they have a woodworking or something studio or stuff. But, you know, the Hilton store has been like the only store in the front. To go to Drive Line, I have to puke, there's a parking spot there. It is not going to bring the community out there. The traffic on 32, we all know, is horrendous. I have to go on 32, I live off of Corson Inn. It's a monster. And with more people, more traffic. I also have rental units in New Palt. I rent out to people. And again, someone else said this, I supply at least six to 12 people a place to live. So I could maybe build it bigger, and I'll bring my rent down. So I should get the same tax break and not have to pay taxes on my rental units. The other thing, the stores, and again, just going back to Zero Place, did anyone think it was going to become condos? And I know somebody, I guess, has died that was in the affordable housing or was moved to a nursing home, and that unit now becomes a condo unit. They don't keep affordable houses.
It's a moral work to, you're right.
I mean, correct with that? I was sort of, okay, I'm sorry. It still stays. But again, I love New Palt. I came here as a student. I've lived here, I've taught at the college, I've taught at the schools. And again, I'm really not happy about this project. And I'm really super not happy about you trying to get away with paying the same taxes that we pay.
Thank you. Next speaker would be Tom Denton.
I had about an hour to go through this application, so I just have questions here about the project, the application, and what's listed there. And again, I'm a resident of New Palt. I'm also a member of a local group, activist group, UACT Housing Committee. I have a question about the primary owner of this, this project. Does he have a record in this area of previous pilots? I don't know that. Or surrounding areas, I would like to know. The general contractor is listed as Hudson Meridian Construction Group, located in New York City. Yet Page 4 says they will be utilizing local suppliers, including carpentry, et cetera. So I need to understand better how that will work, just a question. The same is claim for supplies that will be purchased locally. I think everybody here would probably be interested in local involvement in the building of this project. There is a claim in the application that customers, quote, "will be apartment dwellers from New Palt and surrounding areas." I just wonder if they can promise that. How, what is the process for making that promise? And especially, can they make that, excuse me, for affordable units? The mandated 15%. My printer also wouldn't work, so I'm reading this on my phone, sorry. Can they make this claim for the mandated affordable units? Are there any regulations that affect that? Because that's an important promise to be able to make, that the dwellers will come from this area. The report claims that 80% of the labor will reside in the area, and 80% will earn living wages. I cannot back up what I'm about to say, but I inquired about the two buildings going up on Route 32 and was told that the workers there currently are not from this area. So how is that going to work? In fact, they're from New York City. There's also a question there about how this figures in the whole construction, how this figures with the current administration's deportation policy and workers, construction workers. Finally, I did get some confirmation, I believe, that this project will be subject to a 15% set aside, affordable set aside for affordable apartments, according to current standards. All I ask is that that scribble that is beneath there on the application, I have no idea what that says. And I just want to make sure, I would like to know what that scribble is beneath that statement about the affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tom Impola?
Yeah, I've lived in this community for 50 years. It was and still is a beautiful place to live. There are two major challenges to moving to this town right now. One is taxes are very high. The second is it's being developed beyond recognition very rapidly. I've argued development prone con people, and the argument I always get is, "It's good for the tax base. It'll help keep your property taxes low." Guess what? Lose, lose.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Tabak. I'm saying that right? Tabak? I don't know if that's a T-A-B-A-K. Let's see. Dave, you already went. Okay, thank you. Jason Taylor?
I think they all got tired of waiting.
Good possibility. Let me ask it this time, I'm going down now. Did you want to speak? Yeah. Oh, you're on that last sheet. You're on the other sheet, yeah. Before I go to that sheet really quick, is there anybody else that signed in here that wanted to speak?
That was the first name on the first page.
I apologize. I apologize. And what's your name, I'm sorry?
Tom Carr.
If you want. It wasn't circled at the top, so I just assumed it was a no. But sir, come on up and speak.
Thank you. I should have got there. Tom Carr, former trustee of the Village of New Palt, former trustee of the Board of Trustees in the Village of New Palt and the former president of the School Board of New Palt. When you read the template to open the meeting, you welcome people coming tonight and this evening. And I would like to point out, this is not an evening, it's not at night. And I don't know whether it's your normal practice or special for this meeting, but I think the scheduling of this meeting at 4:30 on a Friday afternoon is a statement, intended or unintended.
Tom, I'm not going to interrupt your time, and I'll give you the time back, okay? But just to clarify, we call and we ask when we can have this. This is the time that they allotted us. Okay?
Okay, so let me clarify. I reach out, my process for all public hearings is I reach out to the town clerk. I ask when
Village or town?
Oh, excuse me, the village clerk in this case. And as we, I'm from the IDA, we're considering this project. We need to hold a public hearing, and what dates and times are available? And I was given after 4, and that is once the building is closed, and a list of dates. And this was the only date that worked. The other dates that this hall was available were too close to when the board would be considering the project. And we want to make sure that everyone has time to give a public comment. Because you can give public comment here, but you can also give written comment and email. So we want to give as much time as possible for comments to come in. So this is the only date that works for both availability of the village hall and enough time before the meeting for comments to be considered.
And you didn't call the mayor and clarify, and I mean, that's
I mean, that's not usually our process.
It should be in such situations as this.
I guess I'm not sure what the clarification would need to be.
So the reason I brought that up is I just wanted to just put that out there, that we do, we have a process of what we do to go to ascertain wherever we're going to have the public hearing, and we look for the available times.
But did they just give you the option of any time after 4? Because that could have been at 6, right?
Yeah.
So again, we, okay, but please note that all comments that are written, mailed, and given tonight are put into the record and given to the board. The entire board is not here tonight, so the board is not going to consider these comments until the meeting. And they will consider all comments, even those that are written. So you do not have to be present to give comments. I just want to clarify that.
Well, I've got 15 seconds in my comments.
Yeah, touch a little. So please, please start again. How's that?
I mentioned the timing of this meeting. Intended or unintentional, but it does make a statement that I did get from a lot of people. New Palt is a wonderful place, we love it there. We love the rail trail, we love the fairgrounds, we love the Millbrook Preserve, churches, schools, SUNY. We love them all, that's why we live here. But we did some informal looking at this situation, this is like 12 years ago. And over 40% of the acres in New Palt are off the tax rolls. Churches, libraries. It's an incredible amount of the things that we love that are off the tax rolls for a good reason. So that leaves a smaller base from which we all have to pitch in and pay for those beautiful things. And just a personal statement, this board's killed us with the abatements you've given already. You're killing us. I mean, I'll leave it there. We have a wastewater plant, which the two previous mayors have said was going to need to be replaced before all this development. And we are going to get an estimate the month after Election Day, in December, about the amount of improvements we're going to need to make to our wastewater plant to accommodate all the development. We're going to find out the month after the election. It's unfortunate. But my point is, we can't keep developing, 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 and giving gifts to these people, because it all falls on us. And we want to live here. We love to live here. We don't want to give up what we have so that somebody else can come in and make a profit off our back. And so we're pleading with you. I'm not yelling at you, I'm pleading with you. Please don't do this to us.
Thank you. Teresa Thompson?
I'm pretty Pilots are bad, we all know this. They are bad for the community, they are for the school district, they are for the taxpayers. I was on the New Palt Central School District Board of Education from 2017 to 2023. We then, and I believe still do, have a mandate against all pilots in our community. Why? Because they negatively affect school districts. I still, by the way, sit on the board of the Audit Committee Board with your colleague Randall. Randall's still on your board, right, Leverett?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, him and I sit on the Audit Committee Board of New Palt Central School District. You'll have a say in this, correct?
Yes.
Since he's on your board?
Mm-hmm.
I feel like I'm repeating myself from 10 years ago when pilots were proposed for the Wilmera Project. They were bad then, they are bad now. To the developers of this project, if you cannot afford to do your project without a pilot, then don't do it. You don't have to ask for a handout. It's really loathsome to me. I'm a small landlord here. When I came here to invest in real estate, I purchased what I could afford to buy. I didn't ask for a handout. Nobody gave me a pilot or kickback for adding to the housing market in New Palt. That's just the way it is. And I'm fine with that. Nobody should have a pilot. We are giving, why are we giving wealthy investors pilots? They should save their money and purchase what they can afford like normal people, like I did when I first came here. I ask that we please do not grant this pilot or any other pilots here. What everybody's saying is absolutely true. We love living here, it's a great community. We don't want you here unless you can afford to be here. If you can afford to be here, build. If you can't, save your money, like I did, and/or go somewhere else. That's all there is to it. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Marvin Warren? I get that one too.
Marvin Warren, the Brooklyn Road Curly. Obviously, I don't live in the Village of New Palt, but a tax abatement that operates on the county level obviously affects me, this affects all these fine people. As a new proponent of the Kipsey, I would have loved to have lived in New Palt. This was where I came when I was a kid, teenager, twenties, to find my community, to find my friends, and where we would all hang out in the evenings and go up into the mountains. I've never been able to afford to live here. Most of my friends who lived here back then are gone because this is not an affordable town anymore. Everyone here knows it, everyone's already been talking about it. The only thing I have to add that hasn't been said already, but it's incredibly well thought out and considered people, is that, and some people have hinted at it, the projected earnings, the projected secondhand knock-along tax earnings that are supposed to be created by this development are a fantasy. There's your made-up numbers based on the idea that there will be full rental of all of the units, including the commercial spaces. We've seen what it looks like. We've seen what it looks like in the rest of the county. We've seen what it looks like in this village in Zero Place. It hasn't happened. We're looking, we're facing down a recession right now. It's certainly not gonna, we're not gonna be seeing new businesses opening during a recession. There's certainly not as many as we need to realize that potential that they are suggesting will happen. I think we're gonna see a loss from this. I think everyone else here sees the same as well. And I think that you need to take into account, please, the fact that you're hearing overwhelmingly negative remarks and people haven't even had the chance to respond given the timing of the meeting. I came here straight from work. This is me acting professional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ed Hill?
Okay, thank you for listening. My name is Ed Hill, H-I-L-H. And my current address is 10 Flunner Port in Kinston, New York. I am a commercial owner, property owner, in New Paltz. Cherry Hill Center, my unit, and I've managed it for the last about nine years. We've owned it for the last 50. So I'm very familiar with New Paltz and the issues with taxes, et cetera. I'd like to congratulate the local government for making some zoning changes years ago that actually allow for this type of development and actually doing something proactive about solving the housing crisis. I hear people constantly complaining about not being able to afford housing, and that's a big issue in this area. My background, my primary living, I got out of school as an accountant. I passed the CP exam and ran like hell. My primary living for the last 33-plus years has been as a financial advisor and a sort of top financial planner. And so, in terms of understanding economic issues, frankly, first of all, to correct some inaccuracies that I've heard tonight, there are exemptions and enhanced exemptions on taxes for seniors and for veterans. So people are, "There you go, I'll get a discount for being senior." Yes, you do, okay? Also, many of you seem to have an issue with the IDA and the rules of the IDA. And if that's a problem, then I suggest that you talk to the county and the county legislature about changing that. I don't think you should come and attack people that are doing a development and fully complying with all the rules that the Industrial Development Agency lays out in order to promote development in this community. If you're having an issue with those rules, talk to the IDA about those rules. These people are playing the game with the rules given, and yet they're getting blamed for it. It's like blaming somebody for hurting a homeowner in baseball.
This is not a game.
I'm not sure, hang on. I am not sure when, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. Okay, thank you. You know, so your issues with the IDA, not with these developers. It also seems that many people here are more interested in the past than in the future. Everybody here talks about the past, the past, the past. This is about the future. This is about investing in your community for the future.
Are you?
Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, ma'am. Yeah? Okay, so here's the deal, okay? First of all, they do pay taxes. They pay less in taxes than they otherwise would. You get more revenue from this property from day one going forward, and it takes 15 years to ramp up to the full tax bill, which I promise you, 15 years out, will be huge. Okay? And if you want lower taxes, look at places that are developed. Look at what the taxes are on a $10 million penthouse and a half, a lot lower percentage-wise than they are around here. Well, if you want lower taxes, you need to allow development. Okay? Excuse me. So this is about, and excuse me, again, I didn't interrupt you, Miss Pam. You know, you wanna be rude, be rude. Be very rude, trust me.
Please, please. Ed, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, okay. So this is about investing in your community. You want rents to go down, then you need more supply.
No, we need less taxes to lower rents.
How are you gonna lower rents without more supply? I guess. We need to navigate with capitalism.
We're all debating on the floor, here. Please, please, please! Please!
There was a comment about the property being in danger of flooding. I was actually on the board of Gateway for about 14 years, ending seven years ago. Also was there in the building, West Monol. Last 20-plus years it has never flooded.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not going anywhere, man. Okay, you're at a lot of good minds.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm about to conclude this meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty scary.
Ma'am. Please, please, please! I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
I signed up with a baby, but with my...
What was your name, I'm sorry?
Diana Armstrong.
Okay.
So I've lived in this community and owned my house for 30 years, right next to Cherry Hill Plaza. My concern is, I'm a senior. Many people are seniors. And as I, when I was growing up and growing in my career, I saw how the town adjacent to us, Highland, folks were forced to move. They couldn't pay their taxes. They couldn't keep their homes. And so, fast forward 30 years later, that's what I see happening here. And I've worked really, really hard as a government employee to own my home, which I would hope I could pass on to my son, my grandson. They'll still have lots of taxes to pay, and they'll have to be able to spend their money how they see fit. But what you're doing now is, people like myself might be pushed out because we cannot pay those taxes. I'm looking on a pension in social security. It's not really gonna go anywhere near where I could start all over. And so, that needs to be taken into consideration. I understand a gentleman has a Cherry Hill Plaza. That's huge. There's multiple businesses there, so yeah, he may be well off. But we who have to live here, like, I don't think any of you guys live here, perhaps maybe build something like this in your communities and see how that fares.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rebecca's Affordable Housing. What's the number?
You can, you can...
I keep hearing Affordable Housing, but I've never heard a number.
That's in the town code, or village code, and you probably could have directed that with the village when the meeting could...
Oh, okay.
Am I up?
Rebecca Rosler? Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I have a very different angle than what you all have been hearing. I have lived in New Paltz since 1992. I served two terms on the village board, four-year terms, and both terms I would step in there because of the way that I watched everything. The Affordable Housing law was something that I started. And I started it with a diverse group of individuals and people who saw the list of people that I asked to be on that board. There was a senior citizen, someone from the fire department, like, just a variety of different people who would have an interest in seeing the Affordable Housing law go forward. And it is 15% of all new construction taken from the time when the law was adopted. So pretty much everything that you see that has been developed over the past number of years have been under that law. And I just want, and I also worked at Ulster Bowses for 15 years. But I have Lyme disease. I know a number of people here do as well. So it's difficult at times. I have been applying for social security disability for years. I just got it this past year. And I've been homeless twice here. Don Kirk, who just left, helped me to move out of a tent. I managed to get caught in a tornado. I hurt me while I was homeless. But at any rate, because of the Lyme disease, it was discovered that I was, my spinal cord was cracked. And I was paralyzed, completely down. I couldn't walk, I couldn't stand up. I did Army stuff to go get to the bathroom. It's my fault. I have upper body strength, but not whole. But at any rate, I got the call while I was recovering in hospital for 11 days after spinal surgery. And it was a person who works for social security who's very happy to finally be able to give me that call. And with that, I was able to afford an apartment, purchase a car, which I've got a really good deal on, and it's used. Most people that were here know that I do a lot of volunteer work. We did the, I do a lot of food recovery. I mean, like, 20 trays of donated food in my car. That's what my car is for. We call it my truck. But at any rate, just recently, like I said, I was finally able to afford an apartment. My rent just went up from $1,675 a month to $1,815. That's a little over $100 more than I get on SSI. I get a little bit of state retirement because of the years that I was on the village board and the years that I was at Ulster Bowses. But it's not enough for me to survive. And that's why we have an Affordable Housing law here, because we need it. It's very important. All of us want to stay here. You know, I've been here since '92, and I know most of the people in this room. And it's just like, for me to, you know, contain a rent check and having to borrow from my brother, my sister-in-law, that shouldn't happen. We shouldn't have Affordable Housing. For one person, I have a one-bedroom apartment, and my rent just went up to $1,815. I can't afford that. So I already told them they signed a new lease because they only gave me a month to incorporate it. But it's, you know, acceptable. I'm sorry, I'm going over time.
No, yeah, you're over time, it's okay. You have to wrap it up, that's fine.
Yes, and it's just to look at something else which is going to make it even harder for people to survive here. I don't want to be back in a tent. I mean, I had spinal surgery, so yeah, a lot of funding, but at least not using a cane or a walker. So at any rate, that's the view I have on the topic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last person I have on my sheet is Erwin Spurber?
Oh, he's here.
Oh, he's here, oh, I see.
It's my order to try, so that I can participate in New Paltz.
First, I'm Erwin Spurber. Living 142 graduate road in New Paltz. I'm in a sort of a twilight zone. The post office says I live in New Paltz, but I pay taxes, property taxes in Gaudier School Taxes to New Paltz. So with all this ambiguity, I might need a neuropsychologist to help me to figure out. Anyway, what I'm here to say, first of all, about pilots is that on paper, it would seem that they contribute to more available housing and because of more housing, in turn, lower rents, more affordable housing. What I would like to suggest is the very opposite is the case in reality because what happens with pilots is that people who are presently homeowners but with very limited income because they're just on social security and a limited pension, or they're disabled, or they're a young couple struggling with getting their kids to school, paying the bills, the copayments and all for pediatrician, et cetera, they are presently, it would appear at first glance that they're homeowners, so what's to worry? The trouble is, they are in this extremely tenuous and tentative situation whereby even the slightest increase in their cost of living will force them to lose their home. And all you need to do is look at some of the newspapers, these official newspapers of record indicating the number of people in the number of tax districts who are subject to losing their home and would be gone with the wind. Their hopes, their dreams, all up in smoke. That's the senior citizens and all the others. So that, what we need to know and what, so far as I can tell, the officials of the IDA don't want to know is the number of people presently owning homes but are on such precarious existence that even the slightest increase, even a fraction of a percent, is gonna be something over the top which they cannot account. And therefore, they're gonna lose their home. I've known people like this. I've known people who were forced to sell their homes in New Paltz, and they would move to other communities where there are fewer pilots and property tax impositions or burdens on them. So the point that I'm getting at is that these pilots do not contribute to affordable housing or housing in general in the long run. What they do is make more and more problems of unaffordability facing more and more people, and nobody's paying attention to this. And it seems to me that this is a heartless and highly unprofessional way to go about making decisions about conferring even more pilots to wealthy corporate developers from Wall Street and Park Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present that wishes to speak?
I'd say some for like about 30 seconds, if not less.
Usually don't have people come back up, but you can enter it in written comment. Okay, once you speak, you speak.
15 seconds?
You were getting staffed. I mean, is that a new rule, please?
So, listen, once again, I'll take written comment on anything else you have to consider, okay? But once we address you, let you speak, you spoke, okay? I'm sorry.
Will everybody's comments, they go to the work floor?
Everybody, yeah, that's, yes.
Be available to the public?
Yeah.
This whole meeting is being livestreamed, and it will stay on our website in perpetuity.
And will the written comments and all be?
All of the written comments can share with the board, and they'll be posted to our website as well. Anything the board considers is also always posted on our website.
Can you react the part about my fat ass and that guy's fat ass? Could be on your website. I told him he had fat ass.
So right now, if there's no further comments to it, how close is public hearing? It is precisely 6:10 PM. Thank you very much for all attending.